We have the agenda review session. We have ordinances on second reading. Number one, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise their ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, Chapter 12.28, Parks and Playgrounds, adding Welton Street Park. Number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise their ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, in regard to abandon, erect, and repair of vehicles on streets. Number three, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise their ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 16 Land Development Code, update minor site plan language and criteria and escrow deposit schedule. Four, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise their ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 17 Zoning, update zoning permit fee schedule. Five, an ordinance to the city of New Brunswick and the county of Millsick, State of New Jersey, approving application for a long-term tax exemption for authorizing the city of New Brunswick to enter into a financial arena with Sterling Side Urban Renewal LLC and granting a tax exemption in regard to 50 Hillsong Street and 45 Hatchet Street, Block 121, lot 1.01 and 1.02. We have an ordinance on first reading. Number one, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise their ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 1016-210, Schedule 38, time-limited parking area from Section 1016-050, Schedule 29, time-limited parking meters in regard to perpatting street. We have resolutions. Number one, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll, 8/17/19, 8:30-19. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, authorize purchase by the fire department in New Jersey Star, contact T0790/17C00811. Firefighter protective clothing and equipment. The firefighter one limited liability company doing business as FF1 Professional Safety Services for protective turnout here not to exceed $34,431.60. Five, approve award contract with Baker &amp; Taylor LLC Assessor Area BTAC Acquisition Corporation for books purchased from a wholesale distributor from the New Brunswick Public Library, term 12-month period commencing September 7, 2019, and ending September 6, 2020. Presubscription number 774, 19 RFP, not to exceed $50,000 fair and open. Six, approve amendment of resolution RM061918, reason new dates and times, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Jane F. Clark III Esquire on behalf of Johnson &amp; Johnson. Reason to pay two parking lots on Jane J. property located on Hamilton Street, due to time Wednesday, Friday, August 28 through August 30, 2019, from 6:00 p.m. 7:00 p.m., Saturday, August 31, 2019, from 7:00 a.m. through 7:00 p.m., non-pro-tung. Number seven, approve award contract with Institute for Rented Psychology for psychological services for the police department and fire department, term 12-month period commencing September 7, 2019, and ending September 6, 2020. Presubscription number 773, 19 RFP, not to exceed $17,025 fair and open. Eight, approve award contract in the Jersey Realty Advisory LLC for appraisal services for abandoned property project, 12-month period commencing September 1, 2019, and ending August 31, 2020, and thereafter for an additional 12 months should the city so desire. Presubscription number 765, 19 RFP, not to exceed $10,000 non-pro-tung fair and open. Number nine, approve award contract with Health Associates Architects and Engineers PA for architectural services for abandoned property project, 12-month period commencing September 1, 2019, and ending August 31, 2020, and thereafter for an additional 12 months should the city so desire. Presubscription number 766, 19 RFP, not to exceed $15,000 non-pro-tung fair and open. Ten, authorize tax collect transfer over payments on several tax facility accounts. Eleven, authorize refund to PNC Bank National Association in the amount of $2,843.97 against 2019 taxes on Block 318, Lot 032, 16 Allen Street. Twelve, approve request for use of city property requested by the Jersey American Society of Landscape Architects, NJASLA, Opportunity Landscape Architectural Club. Location, two parking lots in front of City Hall, 94 Fire Street, for International Parking Day 2019, create a public space to re-press and socialize, Friday, September 20 of 2019, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Thirteen, approve request for use of city property requested by Deborah Suarez, Warmont Monument Park for religious meeting and services for members of the community, Saturday, September 14, 2019, 2:00 p.m. 4:00 p.m. Fourteen, approve request for street closing requested by RWJ UA Community Health Promotion Program. Location, Drift Street between Welton Street and New Street, for a healthy housing fair for the community to provide information on how to live in a clean and healthy home, Saturday, September 14, 2019, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for exceptional duty. Number fifteen, approve on-premice rapid 50-50 at the higher regency New Brunswick to Woburny Street, New Brunswick, for the pride center of New Jersey, Saturday, September 21, 2019. Sixteen, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Thermal Services of New Jersey Incorporated. Reason to place a crane at 109 Church Street between George Street and Yeltsin Street for the purpose of replacing a rooftop HVAC unit, Saturday, September 14, 2019, time 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Seventeen, approve change of corporate structure of record license number 0002, Carnes NV Recovery LLC. Eighteen, approve resolution to extinguish liquor license of German-American club license number 12143110002. Nineteen, approve release of the site inspection fee to closed account, account bound zero. Ninety-one Management Incorporated for 93 Richardson Street, Block 88, lot 9.01. Twenty, authorize application and execution of grant agreement with Jersey Economic Development Authority for Opportunity Zone Challenge Program grant, amount up to $500,000. That is counsel. Okay, any use? Now, false order.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Here. Please be advised that those requirements for the open public meeting act have been applied with and satisfied and that the annual notice, in which case, no notice, of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings to the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, if it's filed with the city clerk, has been placed on a norbea bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the city of New Brunswick, mainly upon the contributor. Please stand. Can't please leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, if you will, for our men and women in our armed forces overseas and at home, and all those who came back, those who did not come back. Let us also pray for our neighbors in the Bahamas. Thank you.
Camera did motion improvement.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Correspondent for the city clerk.
Yes. Item one, a letter from Bristol Myers Squibb regarding an ongoing environmental investigation and remediation at One Squibb Drive. Item two, a letter from JJJ Associates, Inc., regarding a flood hazard area individual permit for 253 French Street. Item three, a public notice from PSE&amp;G regarding basic generation service charges. Item four, a letter from NJDEP regarding a hazardous substance discharge notification. Item five, a letter from Parz Environmental, Inc., regarding a remedial action report and site remediation program for 55 U.S. Highway 1. Item six, a letter from Menlo Engineering Associates regarding a flood hazard area permit application for 30 Charles Street. Item seven, a letter from NJDEP regarding a groundwater remedial action permit for 187 French Street. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have no public hearings, and we have ordinances on second reading. Number one, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise their ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, Chapter 12.28, Parks and Playgrounds, adding Welton Street Park. Any member to the public wish to comment on that ordinance? See any?
Who do ordinance?
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise their ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, in regard to abandon, erect, and repair of vehicles on streets. Any member from the public would like to comment on that? Please come up to the microphone. You have up to five minutes. One time up. Please identify yourself for the record, and you turn that over now.
No.
No, not you, no. Turn it like this. Not up. Told you. Turn it down.
Something on you.
It was, I don't know.
Hi. Thank you, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Just want to ask what the purpose of the ordinance is, what exactly changes from the existing law?
It has to do with maybe electric scooter or something, bicycle, or.
That's correct. This is a amendment to this existing ordinance, which basically will now include electric scooters, motorized scooters, electric bicycles, in the present day and time, with all of the new trends that are coming to us regarding the electric scooters that have now been legalized in the state of New Jersey. We want to make sure that our ordinance covers those types of motorized vehicles, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I caught something out. I was, I spent some time in Asbury Park. I know they have it arranged with a particular company to provide scooters to people, and there's sort of framework for that. Does the city have a partner that it's working with, or is this just to kind of legalize, you know, any scooter that people might?
Any scooter.
What? Any scooter, privately owned scooters, renters, etc., covering the scooter.
Okay. So, as far as you know, there's no partnership or none. Okay. That's all.
Okay. Yes.
Hi, Daniel 133 Somerset Street. Is this an ordinance where, if I understand correctly, due to where also I see a repair of vehicles? What if anyone's taking up a parking spot repairing vehicles for a long, long time?
I don't think this covers that.
Well, it says.
And if, because it's the headline.
Okay.
But it's also including scooters, electric scooters, all those things that we've been finding around the city.
So, basically, anything that's just taking away parking spots where, what the police, you just call the police department, and they'll be able to handle this, to have it removed?
If it's an electric scooter or bicycles, won't go blind?
Or abandoned vehicles.
Abandoned vehicles.
If this ordinance stays in place with respect to abandoned vehicles or dismantled vehicles that aren't operational on the city street, that ordinance has been in effect for many years. Well, call the police department and have that vehicle looked at.
It can only be there for so long.
Okay, even if they have what, license, license plate, what, the police department will be able to prove that, whether they have plates on it, even if it's been sitting there for a while?
Yeah, just in case it was stolen from another town or something, they'll be able to run it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none.
Who do ordinance?
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number three, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise their ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 16 Land Development Code, update the minor site plan language and criteria and escrow deposit schedule. Anyone from the public on that one? Seeing none.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number four, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise their ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 17 Zoning, update zoning permit fee schedule. Anyone from the public wish to comment on that? Seeing none.
Who do ordinance?
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number five, an ordinance of the city of New Brunswick and the county of Millsick, State of New Jersey, approving the application fee for a long-term, long-term tax exemption, and authorizing the city of New Brunswick to enter into a financial agreement with Sterling Side Urban Renewal LLC and granting a tax exemption in regard to 50 Hillsong Street and 45 Hatchet Street, Block 121, Lot 101 and 102. Any member from the public wish to comment on that?
Good evening, Council, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Starting off on Section 1, subsection A, said the council finds and determines as follows, and A, Sterling Side Urban Renewal LLC is the owner of a project within the city of New Brunswick Urban Enterprise Zone. Can I ask, on what basis did the city council make this finding?
We have recommendation to get this taken.
Mr. Dominguez. I believe that that particular item may have been a typo in the, the ordinance. This, this particular site actually is not in an urban enterprise zone, but, but it is still qualified for 30-year tax exemption under its own merits, exclusive of that. Okay, so how would the council like to proceed?
Well, if it's not in, and I wasn't aware of that, Mr. Dominguez caught that, what we do is we amend it by resolution, carry to the next meeting. You guys can see, just delete that particular subsection A. Similar to what we did with the typo on the lot in black, whether we'd need a motion for that. Well, Mr. Cradville, it's quite simple answer.
And so, I just want to understand, then, there would be another public hearing at a future date to comment on the, the ordinance? Okay. Well, then, I'll, then I'll reserve my comments until such time as you have another hearing about that.
Okay.
And, thank you.
Miss Ma, on resolution?
Hello, my name is John Sukni, the address, too?
Yes.
101 Eisenhower Parkway in Roseland, New Jersey. Just a matter of order, to the extent that that's just a typo in the warehouse clause is a non-substantive change. On behalf of the applicant, we request if that just be certain and a non-substantive change to ordinance, and then public hearing continue, we defer to the council.
For my.
Absolutely.
Well, I, I understand you're the attorney for the project right now, and I also understand your position. The law requires that any substantive changes to an ordinance have to be adopted, amended, and then set down again for second reading. Unfortunately, in my humble opinion, and since they pay me to sit up here and come up with these opinions, that is a substantive change due to the fact that it's not in the urban enterprise zone, which is obviously a mistake of, 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 from prior ordinance, I suspect. So, I understand your clients need to want to push this through, and so you can get on with the project. I don't think the council has any objection to this particular pilot, but in my humble opinion, I would recommend that the council adopt the resolution to delete subsection A of section 1, and then re-advertise at the next meeting.
And I, I fully respect, my position can only advocate this, and I understand that. I think we still are eligible under redevelopment, the non-substantive, not because we are designated redevelopment area of the proffer, for your consideration that the remaining part of the ordinance continues to be valid, and it's only warehouse clause. And the only reason why I'm pushing it, it's not our typical, developers want to do everything yesterday. We have a financing deadline of September 12, and if we don't have a tax exemption in place, unfortunately, a delay, we won't get the credit, so we won't, it's actually going to hamper our ability to make an application to afford, to build the building. And it's not our deadline, it's the state deadline for the non-housing tax credits. So, we're not trying to push you beyond what you're comfortable, it's just a timing deadline that we're not control of.
That is potentially problematic, but we'll do what we can do today, and then we'll see.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so, how do we proceed?
So, I would ask that council member adopt the resolution with the R-0-08-19111 to amend this ordinance on second reading to delete section 1A, which refers to the New Brunswick Urban Enterprise Zone. And once that resolution is adopted, assuming is adopted, then I would ask that there be a motion to carry this ordinance to second reading to your meeting on the 18th, 6:30.
Mr. Shannon, I might understand the situation with the developer, but I personally would feel more comfortable if you look at the document again, the whole document, before we make a decision, just because if there's something else that we have missed, to go back and all of that, I don't think is, is effective. I would feel more comfortable if you look at it carefully, and then it's brought back to us at that point.
Tonight, or?
No, no, to bring it back, to wait until it, yeah. I don't, I'm not too comfortable with amending it and signing, rather for you to look at the whole documents before you make that decision.
Well, if you weren't going to consider it a soothing, then you would make a motion to table it, which would in effect kill it, which would in effect start it all over again.
And I understand that, yeah.
I know she has some things there, is there, should we decide to go with it for tonight? Is there a letter that the city can write to?
Well, it was adopted on the first reading, it's in for second reading, it's not legal until it gets adopted on second reading, shouldn't even mayor signs it as well, it has to be published according to law.
Well, we're still going to have the two-week period when we, when we change the language to what it should be, so we'll still. You'll still have time to review the document?
I will.
And you'll also have time to vote yes or no at the next meeting, so I don't think it's anything.
Yeah.
So, we don't have to change anything, I don't think we have to change anything, except the language. We still, we still have to come back, and we can't do nothing till the next meeting, no matter what?
But I don't think, I would agree on table, on table it, just, I mean, I.
I would like to amend it and just go on, but definitely, please make sure you look at the whole thing again.
Well, I will look at it, and I'm pretty confident that.
That's the other thing, tell us go with that.
Okay, so, somebody want, does somebody want to make the motion?
For the resolution.
Resemend. I made the resolution to amend, to take the urban enterprise zone language out of the, out of the ordinance, and table it until September 18. Is that correct, Mr. Shannon?
Yes, correct.
I need a second.
Second. And a public comment?
And a public comment? Oh, sorry, John.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any possibility for a special meeting? Because my understanding is with amended ordinance, you, right, tell me, I'm going to remember, is there a week's notice for an amendment to an ordinance? Only because we're just trying to hit the September 12 deadline, it's not our deadline. If we don't have a tax exemption, we'll lose points, and just, you may understand this right now, the non-housing tax credit, it's a federal tax credit program that's administered to the HMFA. HMFA sets the deadlines for when to make applications from. The applications are scored based off of the site plan approval, the site value, and also the tax exemption, whether or not you admit it or not. We can lose without, just because one point can sometimes make a difference. So, not having the tax exemption, while we absolutely appreciate the interest of this board and this body, and I want to commend Daniel Dominguez for helping us move this along, the 18th, we will lose some point, and it would force us to go to another round. We wouldn't, we don't have an option to finance a non-rounder open scan in 2020. So, is there any way that we could, to, to nest this?
Sir?
Well, I don't think we're going to have enough time to publish it and have it, I mean, this council could have a special meeting, which is a, is a pretty extraordinary act, they've done it in the past, you could have a special meeting, I don't know if you can publish it in time.
I appreciate that.
10 days.
I thought it was only a week if you're amending an ordinance for substitution.
Well, it's, the way I read the statute, the way I read it the last time, I believe it's 10 days, I can take another look at that, but they could always decide on a special meeting as well, if you take a look.
I appreciate that.
And we just have to notice it 48 hours' notice, and this would be the topic of special meeting.
Yes.
Your, your appeal for a special meeting would be to this pod here, so if they're moved by that, you could certainly do it. We just have to pick a date, advertise it, make sure the ordinance is published according to law, and then have anybody come back and comment on it.
We would appreciate that. So, we know that you guys have been working very hard, and been working with us. This has been a multi-year project for us, and we've wanted to build something that you guys want. So, we adjusted our building, we actually reduced the density. We're a long-time resident here, we actually have projects in the area, so we're here to stay, we're not leaving, we just don't want this work to be for not, just because it's some timeliness, that's out of your control as much as it is ours, so we appreciate your consideration for us.
Any other public comment on this?
Yes, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'd like to also ask that you amend this resolution to set forth a special meeting date where you can have the hearing before, I guess, was it the 14th or the 12th? The 12th, okay, so if, if in the next seven days, that's a possibility, before you take this vote on this resolution right now, you should pick the date and, and have the special meeting, because, you know, as much as I'm not a fan of long-term tax exemptions, the applicant has a right to, to make the application, and the public has a right to have a hearing, and the fact that there was an error in the ordinance doesn't change any of that, and so I would like to see, you know, I mean, will the hearing take place, and you have the power to schedule a special meeting to do that, I believe so, I hope that you'll take that action.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we'll see, as soon as we can get that advertised and everything, how the dates work out, and we'll try to get that.
You need to set it down.
No, I don't think so. I don't think we need to set it down, but right.
Well, we're going to amend the, we're going to amend the ordinance, and you can set it down for seven, second reading, and the special meeting that you could adopt, if you're seeing, but why don't we adopt the resolution, amend the ordinance, and we'll move on, handle the other business, we'll come back as far as the motion goes to set the ordinance on second reading down. Just to take a look at something, okay?
Okay, so, you can just continue with the resolution that was already made.
Do you need a roll call on the resolution, amending O-17?
Second. Flaming. We heard from the public, a roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Um, yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Okay. We have that ordinance on first reading, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise their ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 1016-210, Schedule 38, Time-limited Parking Area from Section 1016-050, Schedule 29, Time-limited Parking, Parking Meters in regard to perpatting streets.
New ordinance set down Wednesday, September 18, 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Thank you. We have resolutions 1 through 20. If anybody would like to comment on any of those resolutions, 1 through 20, please come up towards the microphone area and shout.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I only want to ask about the final one, is 1920.
Yeah, can I just learn a little bit about what, what the grant is going to go towards?
So, the state has opened up an RFP for, well, they had the Innovation Challenge Grant, which we partnered with Recorders of Devco on, which we're wrapping up, and the state reached out to us and said that they had put out an RFP for what they're calling the Opportunity Zone Challenge Grant, and so the city is checking one of the boxes necessary to be able to submit a formalized application. I believe they're due on the 16th, and having a resolution authorizing us to be able to submit an application and execute the necessary contracts, as if requisite, this would be the only window we would have to do, that would be this meeting. So, right now, we don't necessarily have any plans or projects in our back pocket, it's more of a, of a house, you know, check the box, so we cannot find, if we have a project between now and then, sort it out. Thanks for the thorough explanation. And for what, and it's $500,000 over five years, so it's not just one month, something.
Anybody else on the resolutions? Yes, ma'am, or coming aboard?
Hi, I just wanted to comment on resolution 12, Reverend Mr. Christie. I'm just from. I'm just from...
The name of the resolution, right?
Oh, yes, Joseph Corney. I address this 4489 Country View Drive, with Tom Kent of the A and M, 2009, too. And I'm just a student at Rutgers. I'm the president of the Rutgers Escobar Fisher Club, and I just wanted to say International Parking Day is a big event here in New Brunswick that we do every year, and it would be great if we could have the parking speakers right in front of the courthouse, and hopefully if it is approved, we would love to have everyone there. Just wanted to say a little bit about Parking Day, and it's a great event for our department. Thank you.
Professor Parton, still?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Saying the resolution, second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I don't know if you want to revisit the discussion on the ordinance now, or you want to wait until next week?
Sure, now, it's good.
So with respect to the amendment to the ordinance that the council just adopted in the second reading, normally the statute says 10 days, no, surely 10 days after our first reading. But council is correct, and I've been doing this a long time, but I forgot about the reliance with respect to the amendment. It's only seven days, so we can do it in seven days. So if the council was so inclined, we could adopt that ordinance on second reading tonight, set it down, assuming the clerk could get that particular ordinance out first thing in the morning, have it published. I don't know what the paper, they do, hopefully they, she's making a face.
Saturday may be the fastest weekend.
Okay. We need at least seven days from the date of publication. So let's assume they publish it on Saturday. We don't do council meetings on Saturdays. The next business day after that would be what?
Monday.
Monday and night.
16.
16. And I, where did the council go? She's like, I have a hard time reading, she's like...
She's asked.
She said her 10th, 12th.
It's the 12th, yeah.
12th. I don't even think you're going to make. It's based upon the notice, it's got to be at least seven days.
Right.
Counsel, can you approach?
I'm sorry.
I forgot your name.
That's all right, it's John Negan.
Okay.
Yes.
So I did look at the statute again, and you are correct, on an amendment, it's only seven days, but it's seven days from publication that it can be heard on second reading. That's the way I read it.
I read it as seven day, one week thereafter, and then, but it has to be, should be further considered for final passage, at least, then the notice has to be published, so these two days prior to the time of fix. I love these statutes, they're really awkwardly, I've been reading it over and over again. So...
The ordinance, as so amended, shall not be promoted until at least one week thereafter.
And the ordinance as amended shall be read at a meeting of the board, which reading may be by 10 o'clock, and shall be published together with a notice of the introduction and the time and place, when and where the amended ordinance will be further considered for final passage, at least two days prior to the time of fix.
Yeah, our problem is that to get it into the newspaper, it would be Saturday?
It may even be Sunday, because today's Thursday, I'm going for my usual Wednesday.
Okay, even if it was Saturday, it would turn out to be...
It would be Monday, and I'm not trying to count the days that we've had. What are you thinking for a meeting date? Are you thinking Tuesday or Wednesday?
Well, no, we were thinking that if she gets it in the newspaper, then it has to be seven days after that.
Depends, I defer to your counsel, I think the publication has to be two days prior to the date of the meeting.
I think publication at the meeting two days after. I think it's publication two days.
Right, that's what I, that's how I hear it interpreted.
Well, I'm looking at the rest of the statute, I think we can do it.
Yeah, so it's the...
So it's in on Sunday, and then it's two days after that, but then you have to wait a full seven days before you can have the meeting, seven days from today, according to the date.
That's the way I read it, too.
So it would be next Thursday to the 12th?
I think Wednesday is a week.
That's right.
Right? I'm counting every day, I count everything twice.
Seven days from Wednesday?
I don't think you counted it.
You got this, tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow, we count tomorrow.
Or next Thursday?
Thursday to the 12th.
Yeah, I was getting a meeting for the morning.
You have to do it before 5:00.
Probably up to the council, let's...
You have to go before 5:00 to hit your deadline on sooner, correct? On the 12th?
I have to double check, but I believe it is 5:00.
Right, it would be 5:00.
We can check right now.
Okay.
Okay, so you're, we're looking at something that's earlier than that, two of our, two of our methods actually work.
Well, let me just ask council this question, because this may all be for your... The council, as you're aware, adopts a reds, an ordinance, it doesn't become final until the mayor signs it and it's published. The action by this body on second reading, does it be sufficient for your purposes, even though it hasn't been signed by the mayor?
It needs to be signed by the mayor, no?
So if it's signed by the mayor next Thursday, which is basically the 14th, I mean, the 12th.
But does that mean that...
Well, isn't that a way that assumption that the mayor's going to be able to sign on Thursday, so you...
Or we're making an assumption that we approve it, or we're making an assumption that we'll find, there's a lot of this.
Yeah.
Or have to do a house, so there is still, too many...
Well, we need to make a decision if we want to do a special meeting, first of all, right? And go down there. Because we can't get it in...
We can get in ordinance material, then, two days after that.
No, I think we should assume that the mayor can do that.
And ask to be two days after the mayor?
No, no, no.
Now, it could be that day?
The mayor can sign it on the second day.
Okay, so then we're talking basically next Thursday.
And this will need to three perverts to be in the report, three people within these carriers, particularly.
So do we need a motion to have a meeting?
I can do that.
We'll be off here.
And Kevin's going to be here.
You mean seven days?
Kevin will be out on Thursday during the deadline, next Thursday?
Probably.
Because it would be in three of us.
Darren and I will be out, Kevin and I will be out.
Glad asking for it. Can we do it?
Yeah, you can do it.
We can go 10 o'clock.
We do it all.
You do 10 o'clock.
I can do 10.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty, 10 is, only need three. I'm pretty, 10 is, but... 10, 10:45, that's my, that's my break.
Please, please do.
You'll be out, so if you can make the...
I would like to make the motion that we set it down for the second reading of this ordinance for next Thursday. Somebody tell me the date, please, again.
The 12th.
The 12th of 2019.
12, at 10:30.
At 10:30 a.m. in these council chambers. So let it be written.
Excuse me?
Okay, yes, go ahead.
The deadline is due on September 12th. Okay, September 12th, still in the, if we can get it to the mayor in time, yes. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'll tell him, I'll imagine, in case one of you may...
How about 9:00 a.m.?
I'll be there next.
I'd like to amend my motion to Mr. Chairman, and maybe...
Was it moved, okay?
I'd like to set down a meeting for the 12th, for 9:00 a.m., council chambers, to hear the second reading of this ordinance.
And that's, for the record, ready to be made? The ordinance number, that would be O- dash 081909, which has been amended by R- dash 01, I'm sorry, R- dash 0-081909-1, for the, the resolution that you adopted a little while ago. And I would also, assuming this motion is carried, after public comment, I would ask if the city clerk advertised a special meeting in the Public Leagues Act, giving our notice for that meeting, because it's not already regen...
All right.
Okay, public here. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay, so, council...
Also, whoever made the typo is not allowed to have coffee in that. Whoever the typo person was, it's...
Do you have any other questions, council?
Thank you.
I know it's cutting it close.
I just feel like you guys are really torturing yourselves, I really appreciate it. I just would ask...
We can forget.
No, you are. I just was wondering, if we can, and I know that the council's, I mean, the rest of this ordinance is factually correct, with the one exception of talking about it, urban enterprise all, but we are an urban renewal entity, the block and parks are correct. There is a financial agreement, the financial agreement does reflect our deal, like, everything else is factually correct, with the exception of that one statement about an urban enterprise. I would str, I would say, I would hate for that to change its standards, just for this.
Oh, we don't mind, we have enough.
Oh, you have enough, me either, wow. But you're not going to hate for this.
Yeah, actually, we do.
Oh, you don't ask for...
Not enough.
All right. We need a...
We need a roll call.
Yeah, just a vote now. What you're doing is you're taking, you're setting this down for second reading on that particular date.
9:00 a.m.
Councilmember Egan?
Oh, wait, just double check, is there nothing else going on? 9:00 a.m. meeting?
We'll fix it.
Okay. I want to make sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
And if you must go, I'll hear a call.
No, we're just going to advertise, and I will ask the clerk to advertise that this particular ordinance will be considered on second reading with that special meeting.
You'll take care of that?
Yes.
The two things, and favor...
48 out of 12, as well as the resolution amendment.
Thank you. Okay.
Before we get to the public portion of the unit, assuming council doesn't have...
So we'll see you next week at 9:00 a.m., 9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m. Well, Thursday. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
I don't have the council's anything to address, to talk about, but I do want to address the council back, issue that came up the last meeting.
Okay, did anybody else have anything here? No, I just wanted to congratulate the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center on all that they did. Very nice last night, it was very nice today, great speech by the president. So congratulations to everybody who's involved in that, doing all that. Welcome back to the New Brunswick University students, hopefully they'll be good. Anybody else?
Open schools, New Brunswick schools open today.
New Brunswick schools open today. This morning, we were, Old Red New Brunswick High School welcoming all the students in with their little gauntlet there, didn't scare them away, they all came in, they were very happy to go to school.
I also have to contend, the governor was in New Brunswick today, 11:00 a.m. They had the ribbon cutting of the P Tech School on Van Dyke and Jersey Avenue, it was very well received, that was a nice thing for the third municipality to receive that distinction in the state of New Jersey, and it would be a great program.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you have something else?
Yes, council president members, council, for last meeting, I believe Mr. Cradville brought up the issue regarding the crane permit for the particular crane that unfortunately collapsed on July 21st of this year, over on East Avenue, Amerton Street. I had stated at a prior meeting that I had reviewed documentation regarding that particular crane, that particular permit, and it was in order. Mr. Cradville questioned whether or not my opinion regarding that particular paperwork was accurate. I went back, I looked at the application for the crane permit, I looked at the permit that was issued for that particular crane that was in effect on the day that this particular crane collapsed. I looked at the identification clause, I looked at the insurance, registration, and I maintain my position, my opinion, that that particular crane, and that particular crane permit was permitted under our ordinances in the City of New Brunswick on the day that this particular crane collapsed. Now, I know Mr. Cradville requests documentation, we have an offer request regarding, I guess, the entire file dealing with this crane permit, or those permits that were requested by the Go and Crane Company. As the council is aware, none of this paperwork had anything to do with this crane collapsing. Unfortunately, the incident did occur. In reviewing that documentation, though, I did discover, and I hadn't looked at the whole file of prior documentation until after our last meeting, that the crane permit fee was not paid for this particular crane as of January 1st, 2019. And I did a little research and inquiry into that. Apparently, the engineering department charges the crane permits from January 1st to December 31st. It's incumbent upon the crane operator or owner to come into the engineer's office and to renew the permit, assuming the crane is still on site, as this one was. Well, apparently, in early July, it was discovered that this particular crane permit fee was not paid, because the crane company had come in and requested a permit for a second crane. So when that particular paperwork was reviewed, they realized they didn't renew the permit and pay the fee. That was all resolved back on July 9th of 2019, again, before this crane collapsed. However, I just want to emphasize to the council that at no time, while the permit fee wasn't paid to the city, at no time was the city at parole relative to this crane or any other crane on the site, because the identification was in effect, the insurance was in effect, the plan was consistent, the police were advised as to what was going on over there relative to construction, use of crane. So while I believe the engineering department has now put in a system to monitor when the money has not come in on a crane, crane permit that still exists on the site, it was oversight, unfortunately. One other issue I want to bring up, that apparently Mr. Cradville has inquired about, and that deals with who signs the crane permits. Our ordinance has been written several years ago, and in fact, let me just say this, there aren't a lot of municipalities in the state of New Jersey that have crane ordinances. There's a handful of, New Brunswick being one of them, that had the foresight to create a crane ordinance to regulate placement of cranes in cities, so as to protect the health, welfare, and safety of residents, if God forbid one of these things would collapse and hurt people. That's why we have insurance provisions, requirements, that's why we want to make sure they have identification, a harmless agreement, we want a plan, we want to know where everything is. There's no particular crane technology that goes into this, other than what the ordinance requires. So our ordinance has directed that the engineering department, that particular department that receives the documentation, checks to make sure everything is in place, receives the fee, and then issues the permit. And in that particular event, the engineering department, who at one time was the city engineer, he or her or his or her designated could sign off on a crane permit, assuming all the paperwork was in order, as authorized and directed by the department head. Well, as the council knows, we've changed our ordinances, and we've combined the Department of Engineering and the Department of Public Works. And as of recent date, the Department of Engineering and Public Works is headed by Mr. Valenti, who happens to be the person who signs off on these crane permits, and he's a prior, he was the assistant engineer, direction of the group. So there is no requirement, it's a ministerial act that a particular engineer, with an engineer license, sign off on the permit, really was designed by the department head to make sure the paperwork is in order. No different than the city clerk issuing a garage sale permit, or having the deputy issue, it's the same, just to make sure the paperwork is in order. That's what our ordinance requires, and that's what was done, and everything is in order. I see no issues with anything to deal with this unfortunate incident on the city's paperwork perspective.
Thank you for the thorough looking into it, I appreciate that, your honor. We have the public comments, if anybody in the public would wish to comment on anything, give them a couple of minutes, one time, else.
Good evening, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick.
Good evening. Charles Croweville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I want to, uh, to correct something that Mr. Shammy told you. He mentioned that the ordinance identifies the engineering department. Uh, can I actually ask if he has the ordinance, he can see whether it says engineer or engineering department, because I'm pretty sure it says city engineer.
The ordinance refers to city engineer on forms provided by the city engineer. It refers to the city engineer as the department head in that particular department that historically has been in charge of issuing permits. As I indicated, it's no different than the city clerk issuing the log sale licenses, and her not actually being the one who signs the license that's issued, or the health officer issuing, uh, dog licenses and having someone else in their office actually process the paperwork.
Right, but it says city engineer in there. Just wanna make sure you know that, that that's what's supposed to be happening. And not unlike the position of Middlesex County Prosecutor, the appointing authority has failed to appoint someone to this role. So, we don't have a city engineer, we have an active city engineer, and that person has been non-responsive to my outreach. I've tried to follow up, only was able to get a few seconds with this person, and they said they had nothing to do with it. They didn't see the permit. They are saying they, they, they were not a part of this process. And we have an ordinance on the books that says the city engineer's supposed to sign off on crane permits. So, I think it's absurd that anyone would characterize this as in order for somebody who's not the city engineer to write in the word assistant before city engineer on an official application for a permit, and then sign their name above it. Uh, that's not what the ordinance allows, and if you read the ordinance, I think you'll agree. So, I would actually encourage you to take a look at this ordinance and maybe revise it. There's probably some other, uh, ways that you can improve it and make it more, uh, user-friendly, let's say. But, uh, the bottom line is that there were issues with the permit, and, uh, you know, I've, I've put this out there on our website, newbrunswick dot today, that you can all see, and I encouraged you to check out last time. And I didn't get the article done that night, but a couple of days later, I did, as promised, deliver that article about this. And I'm still very concerned that nobody did a proper investigation into this crane collapse. Uh, you know, we've seen a lot of people pass the buck, and a lot of people say that, uh, you know, it's somebody else's jurisdiction, but nobody stepped up and said, hey, we're, we're, we took the lead on this, and here's what we found. And I don't think that that, uh, you know, I think that this is, it's, yeah, I'm just hearing so much absurdity on this. I'm hearing, you know, OSHA and Department of Labor, uh, state and federal government, telling me, oh, we didn't do an investigation because there were no workers at the site that day. But a crane collapsed. What if, how many people would need to be killed for OSHA to do an investigation to this? How many people would need to be killed before Department of Labor does an investigation? Just 'cause there were no workers there that day, it doesn't mean the same thing couldn't happen the next day, where there'd be plenty of workers and, and, you know, now that the students are back, this neighborhood is, is full of people, and if something like this were to happen, again, it would probably be a mass casualty incident where many people were seriously injured, if not killed. And so, I just think that somebody's gotta step up and investigate this stuff. And I'm shocked, quite frankly, that we're continuing to make excuses for the errors that were documented here. Um, and so, I would, I would encourage the council to, uh, revise the crane ordinance and look, look into the cause of this, and, uh, uh, do we have a, a, a person in, in charge of emergency management? I thought that was a position that was gonna be created. Who's that?
You're... Firework?
Firework.
I, I thought there was gonna be a new position created, though, a couple of years ago, some was in the budget, wasn't it? For...
For, for all, you're all thinking about that.
We are working on creating a new position until such timeline, still, we're just not in the coordinate.
Okay.
Um, so, so, not unlike the city engineer role, a role that's not, you know, fully been filled in the way that the city's expressed an interest in doing, so I would like to see, um, somebody put in charge of that. And, um, I guess, I guess the only other thing I wanna ask, uh, I don't know how many of you went to St. Peter's schools, um, but, uh, cool. I...
What?
Right, right. And so, I heard that Robert Wood Johnson wants to buy the St. Peter's schools, which are now called Lincoln Addicts, and now public schools, that they, they wanna buy that.
They wanted to buy that, uh, forty years ago now.
I'm sure they've wanted it for a while, but I hear that, I hear that it actually might happen. And I wanna know, who's negotiating with Robert Wood?
Would not be the board bed.
You would think, wouldn't you? But they tell me it's above their pay grade. Uh, they said they're, they're hearing the same things as me, but they're not privy to the conversations, even the superintendent.
Who's they, Mr. Farid? Who did you talk to? Who's they telling you about?
Board members, uh, Mr. Ortiz and Ms. Sadowski.
Okay, I don't know anything about it. I'm just assured it was the board bed or the...
They, they do, they do. That's why I was surprised to hear they think it's above their pay grade. So, I'm just curious, who's doing the negotiating? Are you guys involved? Is the mayor involved? Who's, who's making a deal with Robert Wood to sell a public school?
We are not. The side is not involved.
The city council is not involved.
Do you support the sale of the school?
I haven't looked at all the pros and cons, basically.
Okay, well, uh, stay tuned to newbrunswick dot today, and I'll keep looking into this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, I'm number three thirty-three, Summerset Street. First, I'd like to start off by thanking President Anderson after the last meeting for taking your time to come over to Mr. Jeff's place on, I pronounced it, Laurel Street. After the meeting, when we did get home, you were there, and I thank you, even though he's not here that day. But yes, due to where there was a situation with being pre-handicapped parking spots there, and like I said, due to where there was a police issue with so many police cars coming there with the issue, I did see you there, and I will thank you for coming to solve the matter, due to where now, since you did come and investigate, I have seen, hopefully, due to where you did put a permanent marking down for Mr. Jeff's handicapped parking spot, and I thank you for taking your time after the meeting to do that. Thank you. Then also, my question is, has a stop sign been put up for Roosevelt and Henry, Henry Street?
Stop sign, yeah, Mr. Valente.
Um, the ordinance actually takes effect twenty days after the mayor signs it. We will have that reversed probably within next week. But as of today, no.
Twenty days after, and our last meeting was...
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, fourteen days, so we have to do it in six days.
Okay.
We have to do it in six days.
Okay, thank you. And also, I didn't get a chance to speak about it at the last meeting, but I will say, good job, good job to the New Brunswick firefighters and all the other firefighters, the water department, the, uh, training firefighters. Good teamwork putting out the fire that day that was off of Jersey Avenue. A good source of teamwork. I did see, I know there was an issue with one of the fire hydrants dealing with the fire. Is that possible that that hydrant has to be updated or something, upgraded, due to where it was, it was an issue?
Director Rolfe, do you know anything about that firefight, is that wrong?
Uh, we had, uh, several water issues there, just too much water coming off the same main. So, uh, we had to stretch lines from a further distance down, but any problem with hydrants, the water department was there on the scene, so they're taking care of that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, great job, everyone, everyone. And also, due to where I didn't get a chance to take any pictures, but, uh, of it, due to where I'm, I know, I thank the fire department for helping out, but yes, it is a lot of math, a lot, thick wires hanging down on the corner of Livingston and Power Street, two streets away from, uh, the corner of Red Shaw School. I guess that I didn't get a chance to do any pictures yet, but if you can send someone over to, please remove them wires. They're very thick, and I meant it's a lot of, I don't know if there was a bit accident there or what. But if you can have someone...
That's where the next in power?
Yes.
Hey, Director Rolfe, would you check into that?
And like I said, I know it's not the fire department's responsibility, but I do thank you with your, your workers, where they do help out.
We'll take a look, man.
Take a look, thank you.
Next in power?
Yes, on the same side of Red Shaw School. Uh, then also, my last thing, Councilmember Egan, I believe I've, I've proved, proved to you and a lot of the other counselors about French Street not being cleaned, Remsen Avenue not being cleaned. Do you feel that the city should make a deal with the parking authority for a hundred and, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars for cleaning streets to pay them, and they're not being cleaned, due to where I proved to you that, wow, it's not the parking authority that's cleaning, uh, French Street or Remsen Avenue, it's our city workers, due to where street cleaning, our Department of Works, our garbage men. Do you feel that, wow, that the city should, uh, repay, uh, look into this? We're not making a deal with the parking authority. What is your opinion?
It's more like I told you before, this is the urban enterprise, not their enterprise. So, the, uh, mark city market has a deal, there's a mapped area of what they're paying him for the clean. They're not paying to clean the entire city. I agree, that's not the deal that they made. I, I, I would love for it all to be clean, but the deal that's made between those two entities, the Rockford Parking Authority and the Rockford City Market, they mapped out an area of where the deal was where to be cleaned. You understand?
Yes.
And so, this is French Street. This part of French Street is in it, and this part of French Street is not in it.
Yes.
And, and, and I didn't make the map up. I wish we, we should be cleaning it up every day.
No, the reason...
All the time. But I'm just telling you what the deal is between them. That's the deal that they made between city market and the Rockford Parking Authority.
Yes, because why, like I said, I, I asked you, due to where I presented that evidence, the show, due to where you had an outburst of saying, oh, maybe it wasn't our area where I proved to you from Sutton Street all the way down to French and Sanford Street that that was the area, Dean, your, your outburst was, maybe it wasn't, but I proved to you that, yes, that is the area that where the parking authority is, is not, like I said, cleaning Remsen Avenue or French Street. All you see is the parking authority cleaning George Street and Easton Avenue.
French Street is not part of the, the thing, only part of French Street, only goes up to a certain area, and then the rest is...
It goes up to Sanford Street.
I don't know, who, I don't know what the map is. Someone will have to show it to me. I don't know.
But please do, due to where you, the one that outwitted, the outburst stating that, okay, it wasn't the area, and I believe I proved my picture by...
I'm gonna be proving that, Mr....
Oh, well, believe me, that's why it's on video, due to where you can take a, you can take a look at the videos that I proved, the areas that are not being cleaned, and like I said, I just proved to you by pictures stating, due to where, what? The city is cleaning, the street cleaning, the garbage men are cleaning, what, what, what? So, what, what do you say?
Mr. Warren, I think another best thing is, because even for me, I don't know where the limits are, the boundaries, so we need to, you know, I don't know if you know that, okay. Uh, so, let's, then, let's find out what are the boundaries from city market, you know, to look at that, and, and then we could move forward to see. Because if that area is not, I'm not sure if it is or not, personally, so if, uh, so I am unable to articulate any opinion of it, because I'm not sure if it's that part of the area. So, we need to identify ourselves up to what are the limits, the boundaries, and then we could come back and revisit, uh, your concern.
Oh, 'cause like I said, yes, due to where I feel, wow, you're paying the parking authority, what, over sixty thousand dollars to do two streets? They're not doing it well, like I said before, due to where all that extra work the city workers are doing.
So, let us, let us find out what are the boundaries up to what a street is that they have the, the contractual agreement, and then we'll take it from there.
Yeah, yeah, there is, even like I said, I see it, what, even from nine o'clock at night down here, power washing, George Street, Easton Avenue, you never see it in those streets getting cleaned.
So, we'll find out, we'll see the map again, and see what are the boundaries.
Please do, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the public seeing that?
I made the motion to your chair, second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes, thank you, everyone.